Amen to that.
Good morning, Waltham. December 3, 2019, Wayne County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to ask Commissioner Cromartie for invocation.
He's bowed his head. Almighty God, we first would like to give thanks for being able to get up this morning in a sound mind. Dear Father, we want to give thanks for being able to arrive at this site and register to do county business. We pray for good judgment, and we pray that what we do will be for the benefit of our citizens. We also pray for the safety of our employees as they go about their daily chores. Hail the Father. After this meeting, we ask to give us road mercy, travel back home to our respective sites, and all safety, and in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Before we say this, remember why we pledge this flag, to pray men and women have sacrificed so much, all the way back to the Revolutionary War, defending this flag to give us the freedom that we have today. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Parker, you ready?
Yes, sir. The nominations for the election for the chairman of the Wayne County Commissioners.
Mr. Parker?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Ray Mayo as chair.
Are there any other nominations? Do I hear a motion for acclamation? Election of Mr. Mayo.
Sub move.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or opposed? Mr. Mayo, congratulations. I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. I just want to say before we go any further how much I appreciate the Commissioners and your confidence and the leadership that I will provide like you have in the past. I want to thank Chairman Gurley and Vice Chairman Pate for your last year of leadership. Looking forward to continuing the relationship as it has been, and therefore we will move on to our relation of vice chair. Do I hear any nominations for vice chair?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Joe Daughtry as vice chair.
Are there any other nominations? Do I hear a motion to accept my acclamation?
Sub move.
All in favor, raise your hand, please. Right hand. Okay, unanimous. Okay, at this time, we have on our agenda to have a short recess so we can do some rearranging. So we're in recess at this time for about 10 minutes. Okay, we're back from our recess to reconvene our Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, the approval of the minutes from November 19, 2019, I hear a motion to approve.
Sub move.
All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, minutes are approved. Mr. Honeycutt, discussion and adjustment of the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and congratulations. We would like to add a couple of different things. One to the consent agenda would be number 10, Arrington Bridge Road, or Arrington Bridge Volunteer Fire Department Funding Agreement Subject to Council Approval. And then under New Business, number three, setting up a public hearing for December 17 at 9:30 a.m. to discuss incentives for Project Nest. So we would like to walk those on, sir.
Mr. Chairman, yes.
I may be wrong, but I think it's just Arrington Volunteer Fire Department. I don't think it's got bridge in there.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Okay, do any Commissioners have any adjustments or comments on their changes in our agenda? At this time, let's like to have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Okay, unanimous. At this time, I'd like to declare public comments. You have four minutes to stand up and speak if you would give your name, address, and phone number. So we're at public time now, public comments. Anyone wish to speak? Okay, I declare the comments section closed. We have a former committee today, Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, and I don't know what I've done with it.
Sorry about that. We have two, one appointment and one reappointment today, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to appoint High Waffa Jones to the Wayne County Public Library Board of Advisors, and that's in the form of a motion from the Appointment Committee. Okay, did I hear, did I hear a motion?
You don't have to have a motion on this.
All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All right, we have a reappointment, Mr. Jonathan Holland, to the Wayne County Firefighters Association Relief Fund Committee, and that's in the form of a motion, sir. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Approved. That's all we have today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Mr. Honeycutt?
Next, we do have the consent agenda. If there's any questions about any item under the consent agenda we went over during our agenda briefing.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank the Chair. And under New Business, we do have, number one, motion to adopt Resolution 201936, a resolution requesting the addition of flood-impacted properties to the HMGP 4285-057 Acquisition Project. And again, this resolution was a result of our last meeting, that we found out that there were some properties that dropped out of the program, and we wanted to make sure if there was any additional properties that needed to be added, that we could still use that same funding that would be remaining.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I might, in this resolution, it indicates there's approximately $600,000 of funds that would be unobligated, and that represents 10 property owners that have withdrawn. Hopefully, we could have 10 additional property owners to participate.
Yes, sir. That is to golf. Yes, sir.
Our own county is pursuing this matter like we are?
That I'm not aware of. I'm not sure how many have stayed in or dropped out in other counties as well, but...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Parker?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution 201936, a resolution requesting the addition of flood-impacted properties to the HMGP 4285-057 Acquisition Project.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And the first where it says, there's vision of emergency management, so forth and so on, grant funds, there's a $7 million, 872,509 in the first one. When David was here the last time, and I want some, that's why I'm asking for a little bit of clarification, if you know, does that represent the amount that, does that represent the balance of the $26 or $27 million that the county originally got, and that $7 million is the balance of what has not been obligated?
My understanding, that's just was obligated for the HMGP, which is a buyout program.
I'm sorry.
That's not part of the total flood relief, but just part of the buyout program, was the $7.8 million.
That's already been obligated, or that's left to be obligated?
That was obligated, and what we're trying to do is, there are properties that have dropped out, and we want to make sure we do that full obligation of funds that are available. We don't want to have to give any money back.
No, that's what I'm hoping. And this is a pretty complicated, a pretty comprehensive, I won't use the word complicated. It's a comprehensive resolution. I was just curious if any of my fellow Commissioners had any questions on this whole package here?
Mr. Chairman?
It's the one part, yeah, this is just the buyout program. This is just the buyout part, right.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Parker?
This has, I think I know where Commissioner Cromartie is going as respect to string clean out. These funds are available for string clean out. The HMGP funds are not. It's just for buyout.
All right.
I bring, I try to bring just a little bit of attention to this because there's a perception in the community as a whole that it's not the greatest of understanding.
Correct.
And as we sit here and read it, it's not the greatest of understanding.
Yes, sir.
I just want to, and, uh, thank you, sir.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. All in approval, raise your right hand, please. Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could follow up with Commissioner Cromartie, there is that public hearing tonight.
Yes, sir.
The city of Goldsboro at 6:00 p.m. that is going to talk about some funds that are remaining and what we can do with those funds as well. And I do plan on being there and really advocating for funding to look at string clean outs and some preventive measures that we can do within the county.
Thank you, sir. I'll try my best to be there with you. Just want to hear that, too.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if I might inquire, so you are planning on speaking at that public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Advocating for that?
Yes, sir.
Great.
Next is a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-37, a resolution to place a 1/4 cent of 1 cent local option sales tax on the March 2020 primary in Wayne County, North Carolina. And I do want to thank our school board chairman, Mr. West, for being here, our superintendent, Dr. Duffmore, and Dr. Carroll for being here as well. If there's any questions that you have, they're here to answer those for you. But if you would like, I'll be glad to read the resolution.
Yes, please, read it.
Get your right page. Thank you. Whereas, the North Carolina General Assembly has authorized county boards and Commissioners across the state of North Carolina to levy a 1/4 of 1 cent county sales and use tax contingent on an advisory referendum in which the majority of those casting ballots in the county vote for the levy of the tax. And whereas, Wayne County Board of Commissioners believes the education of the children and youth of Wayne County is a critical mission and priority. And whereas, Wayne County is faced with extraordinary funding pressures resulting from public education needs. And whereas, the 2014 state budget, Senate Bill 402, rewrote the lottery statutes and eliminated the 40% statutory guarantee of net lottery proceeds for school construction, which was a dedicated funding stream in place since the lottery's inception in 2005. And whereas, the Wayne County Board of Education has identified significant needs. And whereas, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners will use the funds to pay debt on additional new school construction. And whereas, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners have already provided over $90 million in the past eight years to new construction and improvements and pay debt obligations to maintain Wayne County public schools in a safe and comfortable conditions as possible. And whereas, additional school resource officers are needed to provide the safest environment possible for the teachers, students, and staff of all Wayne County public schools. And whereas, the implementation of a 1/4 cent local option sales tax excluding gas, prescription medication, and non-prepared foods or groceries is anticipated to generate approximately $2.6 million in revenue per year in Wayne County to facilitate school construction. Now, therefore, the Wayne County Board of Education, Board of Commissioners hereby directs the Wayne County Board of Elections as follows. Number one, conduct an advisory referendum on the question of whether to levy a local sales and use tax in the county as provided in North Carolina General Statute 105-535. Number two, the election shall be held on March 3, 2020, primary and shall be held in accordance with the procedures of North Carolina General Statute 163-287. Number three, the form on the question to be presented on a ballot for the election concerning the levy of the tax is established by the NC General Statutes as for against local sales and use tax at the rate of 1/4 percentage in addition to all other state and local sales and use taxes. Adopted this the third day of December 2019.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Parker?
If I could editorialize a little. Yesterday, a fellow board member presented me with his quarter that he held up at the school board meeting, indicating that's what a quarter sales stance represents. It's a very small amount, but together, if we all put that quarter in, it makes huge, a huge benefit. In editorializing, let me say this. I've been on this board now for some seven years, and I have not seen a more need than we had here in Wayne County in regards to school facilities. The need is so great that it boggles the mind of how you would even formulate a program to finance the needed improvements. It's time our community recognized that we are going to have to invest those dollars in school facilities. Now, the question is, how do you pay for it? Do you pay for it by increasing the obligation on the property owners exclusively in our county, or do you share that across the board so that everyone participates in contributing toward this much-needed item? We attempted to pass this some, a year ago, and got caught up into a lot of other referendums that happened to be on that ballot at that time. And it was easier just to say no, 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 and keep rolling, knowing. This time, we're hoping that this will be a clear decision on one referendum that will be on the ballot. And we're hoping that all of our community, all of our boards, our commissions, can come together and find a way to finance our much-needed improvements in our school construction. So we're going to leave it in the hands of the voters, but I'm hoping that we all can come together and make this happen. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Pate?
And I spoke several times, last time we tried to get this passed, and I was trying to get this across a lot of what he just said. I'm getting to the mic. But folks, this is just a quarter on $100. Remember, that's a big difference. A lot of people say, well, that's a quarter on a dollar. No, it's not. It's on $100. And it does not impact your gas prescription medications and non-prepared foods or groceries. In addition to that, those who pass through Wayne County and spend money here also help pay. So it's not just the Wayne County residents, it's those who visit our fine destination of Goldsboro or Wayne County. I just wanted to add that to that. But I thought it needed to be added. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And on what Mr. Pate just says, I mean, you know, you can get the figures from traveling tourism. There is a lot of money spent in Wayne County from non-Wayne County residents in traveling tourism. We've got the figures, and it's a staggering figure.
Any other?
I would just like to add one, a couple of things. The value of this sales tax gives an opportunity to participation across all levels of residents. Wayne County has the great fortune of having a lot of industry, some industry, especially in the agricultural side of the house, where folk, a recent inhabitants of Wayne County, not necessarily all in property, but are here contributing to all phases of the county, but to also include the benefits of our county. The school population is a great mass of different individuals from different families and from different countries. And this gives all of us an opportunity to participate equally, or at least equitably. The second thing I would like to do is make a, I've never thought about this before, but to make a personal appeal to our community leaders. In years past, in decades past, the most influential leaders in our communities were oftentimes at church. And I would just like to reach out to our pastors to look at this and make a concerted effort to share appropriate information with the congregations and see that this is something designed to move Wayne County forward and do what we need to do for the children of our county. And then I would just leave it at that. The leaders in the community, out in the community, can have an enormous impact on what we're doing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any, any other comments from anyone?
Mr. Chairman, this is not only going to, this would not be as much of an impact on a lot of our students that are in school now as it will for the future students. I mean, this is, this is, this is going to impact children that haven't even been born yet. This is, for better choice, this is a big deal. I mean, this, we need this. Mr. Chairman, I did have one little thing I forgot to add to that. I had heard that there were some in our community that was concerned that this board, at some time in the future, may rescind this, may use these dollars for other purposes. To clarify that, let me make sure you understand that the initial goal is to actually borrow and leverage this $2.6 million over the course of the next 20 years. And what I mean by that is that there are schools that need to be constructed, and you're going to have to borrow the funds in order to do that. We will be pledging these dollars to repay that, and those terms would generally be for 20 or more years. So it's not a matter that these dollars could be redirected somewhere else. These dollars would be committed for the long run. Well, I won't be here in 20 years, but 20 years is a, is a long period. So there is a long commitment there for these dollars to actually be going to school construction exclusively. Thank you.
As, also, I'd like to add, I know, I appeal to the, to the public, because this is, my mind is one of the top priorities of the coming years. We already know, to add to what's already been said, that we have three schools that need to be replaced now. We have three of the older schools that we need to confront in the future to build. It's the most equitable way that, that we can get this done is with the 1/4 cent sales tax. I do not want to add a property tax on the 30 or 40% of the property owners in Wayne County. I plead with the public that to get on board with this 1/4 cents so we can move our education system forward, because we've done a great job over the last eight years. As I mentioned in the resolution, we spent over $90 million on schools. But the key is, is that breaking mortar is part of it. We've, we've got to address all the other issues that goes with providing a good education. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Duffmore or any of the people from the Board of Education, would you want to have any comments at this time?
No, I just thank the Commission for hearing that. I think everything that you all said is, is well stated. And I think, Mr. Acoch, as you said, I think most of us, the fruition of a lot of this work is going to outlast all of us. So I do thank you on behalf of the children and the staff of the schools.
Okay, what's the preference of the board?
I'm making a motion to adopt the Resolution 21937, a resolution to place 1/4 cent, 1/4 of 1 cent local option sales tax on the March 2020 primary in Wayne County, North Carolina.
Okay, any other comments? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Unanimous. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could, the Superintendent and I talked a little bit before the meeting, and we are available to come together and present and give information out to any public group that would like a request. Mike made a great point that it would be good for both of us to go together to show that we are unified with the school system, the school system is unified with the county. So we make that offer publicly, and just let us know, we'll try to schedule that. Or if you have groups that you would like us to attend, let us know.
And just one last thing. There's a certain amount of our public that when I come in contact with them, they tell us that they do watch this sometimes. So it's, it's good to have you all with us this morning. And I think that's the most unifying thing, is when the public, sometimes switched by their channel, they will see that we're, we're here together. Thank you for coming.
Oh, yes, we do. New Business, we'd be setting a public hearing for December 17 at 9:30 a.m., and that would be to look at and consider economic incentives for Project Nest.
Mr. Chairman, I move adoption.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. Unanimous. Thank you.
Now, a couple of things I want to mention, too, under County Manager's Update. This will make Commissioner Acoch very happy. The LGC has on their agenda for approval at this month's December meeting, the offer to purchase the property from Eureka for the cell tower. So, so that project is moving forward, and I wanted to make sure Commissioner Acoch was aware of that.
One correction. It's not cell towers, 911.
911. Get the, I'm sorry, thank you. But also, let you know that next week... But also, uh, let you know that next week, uh, our, uh, emergency management director, Aaron Stryker, will be activating our EOC, uh, as a training operation with Cherry Hospital and Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. So we're kind of excited about doing some training with our EOC. So I appreciate the work that, uh, Aaron is doing. Wanted to also remind you of our county Christmas luncheon, which is December 12th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Maxwell Center. And also on December 12th is the State of the County and City Meeting at the Goldsboro Event Center, uh, and that will begin at 4:00 PM. And Carol did want to mention something publicly about the, uh, Goldsboro Christmas Parade.
Just once again, that, uh, we'll be going live with it, with Public Affairs. It'll be on YouTube, Channel 10, and social media. We're very excited. Starts at 4 o'clock.
And I just want to remind you, uh, this is parade weekend special here in Wayne County. The Mount Olive Christmas Parade, uh, lineup is at 9:00 AM. If you would like to ride to Mount Olive, meet me here in the parking lot at 8:45. We'll be glad to go there. And then we have Fremont at 11 is lineup. And then the Goldsboro Christmas Parade, uh, is lineup, uh, at 3:30. And these are all on Saturday, December 7th. And then on Sunday, December 8th, the Eureka Christmas Parade, uh, we have a lineup at 2:00 PM. And that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners' comments, uh, Mr. Gerle?
Speaking of parades, a couple of series ago, along with some of the others, we went to the Seven Springs Parade and all, all of the effects of hurricanes, Matthew and Florence are still visible. Still had a pretty good turnout with the bad weather and rain. Not as many injuries as you have in the past, but you got to give to them the pride and the spirit that had to continue on with the parade. So, I'd like to mention that. Also, Mr. Chairman, um, I wish you well. With your experience, I'm sure and feel very confident you'll lead us in the next year. And, um, anything I helped you with, just, just give me a hug.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gerle. Uh, Mr. Bell?
I'm going to pass my comments to Mr. Doherty.
Okay.
Got to get by me first.
Okay, Mr. Cromarty?
Well, not that many.
Oh, okay. Mr. Acock?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really, there's a lot going on this time of year. I hope everyone had a good Thanksgiving, uh, looking forward to, to, to Christmas season. I just, uh, one date that I want to make sure everyone's aware of is the open house at the Maxwell Center. That is on the, the 5th, at, from 5 to 7. Uh, you know, we're very proud of that building and, you know, we don't get a chance to show it off to everybody at one time, but, uh, it will be, my understanding, open to the public, correct? And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Doherty?
At no cost, is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Doherty?
I want to give a shout out to a school board member. Since we got the school, some of the school board here, the chairman's here, uh, superintendent. And that school board member is Ben Falk. I want to thank Ben Falk for actually resurrecting and pushing through, uh, the memorandum on the quarter cent sales tax. It was, it was his idea to try to get this formulated back onto the ballot. With the passage of the resolution, it's going to be on the ballot. But you know, sometimes it's easy to sit back and really not do much, you know what I mean? Just attend the meetings. Here's, here's a guy that actually put, put it out there on the line and worked hard to actually get us to this point. So I just want to give a, a shout out to, to Ben. Uh, additionally, uh, I read in the newspaper this morning that the mayor of Goldsboro was not present last night and actually is, uh, going to Duke for some issue. And I just would hope that we all keep him in our prayers, he and his family in our prayers. Don't know what the issue is, uh, but, uh, whatever it is and whatever the need may be, we certainly want to keep him in our prayers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Page?
I want to follow up on that and, and I, and I agree with you about, about the mayor. As I, I've learned, you never know at what age and what time that illness is going to strike you. I've been through it. This past year's been a really rough year for me. I'm feeling a lot better. And there's a number of folks on this board who've been through that. So we know that God can be with us and can pull us along. And I hope that happens there. Uh, Mr. Doherty, I do want my chair back. I think it fits me better. Something about this chair that does not feel right. I think I've got that broken in.
It looks pretty good.
I know, I broke it in. Could you bring back the brick thing? Can you pull that up?
Absolutely.
Doing a little sales work here. I had asked Carol a couple of weeks ago, I guess, it's time for us to, um, look at selling a few bricks out there at the, um, Maxwell Center. I, I walked out there a month ago and I looked down and I said, Bill, you hadn't even bought yours yet. You've been trying to sell this and you hadn't put your money where your mouth is. But Carol did not put my money where my mouth is, and I did make my investment on that. And I encourage all of you to do that because then you will be there forever. And your, um, children, their children will come out and see that you cared about something enough to put some money in that, that means so much to our community. So I hope that you'll do that. See Carol after the meeting. Great, great time of year. We're lucky that a number of us are being allowed to go to the volunteer fire departments. I'm going to Sawston tonight to square up their officers. I always look forward to doing that and I, unfortunately, this will be the last year I'll be doing that as a, as a commissioner. But there is one big thing to celebrate that I found out about this morning. Today marks the third year anniversary of our clerk to the board.
How about that?
We still got you. Get around, right? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Had to throw that in.
Mr. Cromarty?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A, as a customer, we try to highlight the, uh, things that we've done since we were last in a formal meeting. Always, I get a good call from someone to make sure that I'm at the DSS meeting and that's progressing well. I, I'm just always, uh, appreciative of the fact that we have such hard-working, uh, people in our departments around the county who are doing excellent, excellent job. And, uh, I, I would, I would not want to miss this opportunity since we have our school friends here. Prior to our last meeting, we did have groundbreaking at, uh, Southern Wayne. Uh, I'd like to, from my standpoint, thank those of the school, family who put all that in place and gave us the opportunity to come down and share that, uh, with them. Dr. Dunsmore and his entire staff and of course, under the leadership of, uh, our illustrious chairperson, Mr. West. It all took place and Timmy, great job. But I just wanted to shout out for all the folk who may not have had an opportunity to see any of the photographs and so forth and so on. I encourage the county to, uh, look those photographs up and make themselves aware of what's happening. But there's a lot to be done. And as, as we talk about the sales tax, there are schools that we need to pay close attention to and do something about when we get the necessary information that, uh, the number of classrooms that need to be constructed. Dr. Dunsmore, I hope that information is made clear to us and to the public so that they will further internalize what it means for that sales tax to go forward. But thank you for being here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Cromarty. You know, this time of year, uh, Thanksgiving and, and Christmas is a special time of the year for all of us. In spite of everything, we still live in the greatest country on earth. Yes, uh, this board, according to, uh, Mr. Bell, we have intense fellowship and we probably will continue that, uh, this coming year. Commissioner Cromarty and I are on the DSS board and, uh, DSS has really, really come a long way. We have a department in Wayne County, and we have a lot of departments. But being on the DSS board, the progress of DSS over the last three or four years has been phenomenal, uh, along with the support of commissioners and, and other agencies. Also attended the Seven Springs, uh, parade. I thought it was going to be a rainout, but it wasn't. It was, uh, it was, they always have a good parade there. I, I enjoyed going. I enjoy going to parades and, and this is just a sideline. I always watch the kids that are not standing up on the front. I watch the kids that are way back in the back. The kids that may have, uh, not dressed quite as well as some. I like to throw candy as far as I can throw it because all kids and adults, but mostly kids, enjoy Christmas. And it's a time of year that we can give back, uh, what we've been blessed with. Finally, I'd like to say that, um, what a privilege it is to be chairman of this, uh, commission board. We have come a long way in eight years, uh, on this board. My intent is, is to continue to lead this board as it has in the past, to coordinate, to make sure we all stay together as much as possible working with the school board and other agencies that we need to work with. Having said that, I always remember in 2011, Commissioner Bell, he taught me one thing. He would back up and hold up four like this. He taught me that four is the key. Is that right, Mr. Bell?
That's it.
I'm always going to remember that, uh, as, as we, as we go forward this fiscal year, that there are seven members on this board, not just one. So with that, having said that, I'm looking forward to, uh, stepping up to the plate, being the very best, but I will tell you this, I'm the same now as I was an hour ago. I'm the same person. So having said that, um, we need to get back in closed session.
Yes, sir, for the same reason.
Okay, we have a motion.
So do we.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand, please.